Yes.
No.
Good afternoon.
No, no, no.
It says laws.
Oh, it doesn't say recording. It just says live on YouTube. It doesn't say recording.
Now it says recording.
Okay.
Good afternoon. I'm sorry. Good afternoon. This is the Board of Standards and Appeals Public Review Session for June 29, 2020, 2:00 PM session. No public testimony will be taken during this review. The first case is a continued hearing, 20768 BZ, 11558 Dunkirk Street, Queens.
We have all the commissioners. Commissioner Sheta is on.
I'm here.
Okay, just making sure. Thank you. Um, notice of this teleconference with Dial and Info was served to official officials and neighbors at our request. We actually asked specifically that this one be renoticed for this teleconference hearing. With the direction of the 2004 BSA grant, a financial analysis was provided that shows a residential development on the site would suffer a significant loss. And of course, I'll defer to Commissioner Oatley Brown for complete analysis of that. Drawing or revised to show what is described as planting along the lot line shared with potential building. But if there is to be planting as requested, then it has to be in-ground with curbs and section and detail shown. So we never allow planters. They die, and it's just not an effective way. We're trying to buffer the commercial use from the residential use, right? This this site was in bad condition when we looked at it in February. There was illegal construction in your side yards that photos of June 9th, recent photos show in the process of being removed. We should see photos of the area completely cleared of illegal structures and the fences replaced and repaired. The applicant describes the residential property next door as a boarding house. As if somehow I'm reading into it that that's somehow a lesser valued residential use, but it is in fact, like all residential uses, deserving of respectful neighbors. I don't see any reason for not installing robust landscaping adjacent to it, since no work or storage of supplies of any kind is permitted at the exterior of the building, and there is ample parking plus landscaping. And because this building is in a residential district, ricking up openings in haphazard fashion, as is suggested, is not an acceptable solution as far as I'm concerned. If an opening is to be decommissioned, then the facade has to be made to look uniform with a clean, uniform paint job, or a uniform painted stucco, or a proper, consistent matching brick installation, which is a hard trick to do because you can never get the bricks that were the original bricks unless you take them out of another portion of the same facade. That goes also for the sides of the building that can be seen by residential neighbors as well. The site, on the other hand, backs up against railroad tracks, so that's not visible to the residential neighbors, I don't think. The as as the roof and the roof, which I can see on some of the satellite imagery, has all this debris and storage on it, has to be maintained free of debris and storage. It's to be a roof, properly maintained as a roof. As stated at the last hearing, the sidewalks have to be repaired. Please mute yourself. One, because there's strange background noise. Everybody mute. Thank you. As stated at the last hearing, the sidewalks have to be repaired, as do the broken curb cuts in front of the rolling doors. If I understand the request here, it is for an extension of term to allow general use group 16 use. Maybe I don't understand the request. I think we need to consider carefully whether the approval, whether that approval would be too broad, since the use group includes automotive repair and welding shops, which we specifically said was not permitted at the site. So I think we should be specific as to use. I didn't find proof of continuing continuous use in the submission. The variance expired in 2013. I also didn't see the formal request for a waiver of the board's rules under Section 1-07.3B3, or establishment of substantial prejudice that would be suffered. Commissioner Shonda, please.
Um, so going, starting with the plan, I also had similar concern with regards to the landscaping. And also, the landscaping not only seems to indicate that these plants would be on box, kind of raised surface, but they are also not extending along the entire residential property line. It should really be along the entire residential property line. Maybe they it needs to be cleared off the gates, roll in, but apart from that, the rest of the length, the entire length should be covered with landscaping and of course, provide the detailing of it. The applicant provided two leases for, so that means there are two tenants, but the plan seems to indicate there are, lack of a better word, three rooms or three areas. So there are two tenants using three areas, or and and from the floor area calculation that was provided on the lease, it wasn't quite clear which area each one is referring to. I think I kind of made the connection, but I would like the applicant to clarify that. There are three distinct areas that have separate entrances, and they're not connected to each other. So I would like the applicant to clarify which lease applies to which of these distinct areas. And I agree with you regarding all the other improvements that the applicant needs to make.
Okay, great. Thanks. Commissioner Oatley Brown?
I agree with both of you about the landscaping needing to be in-ground and not in planters, and that the space, although it looks better now from the photos, it is not totally there yet, still looks a little dilapidated. So they need to work on that. As for the financials, the whole theory of these financials should be that the demo costs are what's driving the fact that this is not a feasible project, because you have a viable commercial use, and to rip it out to install a residential use would not work. So the major issue I have with this has to do with the construction costs. The combined construction costs, both hard and soft costs, including demo costs, are around $400 a square foot. The demo costs only account for about $22 a square foot, though. So the rest of the construction costs around $375 a square foot is kind of on the high side. And so what I need them to do is tie that number to Marshall and Swift, so that I can see that it's not way out of line. And if it is, they need to bring those costs down to what the generally associated costs are. And it shouldn't really affect the idea that the as-of-right won't work, because right now, the delta between the cost and the value is so high. But what it will do is it will make the financials pass the giggle test, so to speak, in that they're at least using assumptions that are rational assumptions that are basically accepted in general industry. And then a small correction in the financials has to do with the residential leases. They don't have, they have adjustments for the subject and the comparables, but there's no explanation for the rationale for the adjustment factors, whereas there is for the industrial leases. So they just probably left that page out. They need to put that back in. And that, those are my questions.
Thank you. That's good. Thank you. Commissioner Sheta?
Thank you, Chair. I agree with Commissioner Oatley Brown that this project is has improved, but I I recall that it's still so far from moving it forward towards extending the term for the variance. So far, I'm tending to like, look into an as-of-right residential. Last hearing, they submitted like a ridiculous proposal for the as-of-right, was just like two units or so for that huge footprint. Upon request, they improved their submission. But I still can see that the as-of-right floor area is is about slightly above 16,000 square feet. And in their as-of-right, they just used about 70% of that. I believe this was done intentionally to kind of like lower the income. In addition to that, I'm not sure why are they considering total demo of the existing structure. As far as I understand, and I can see from the drawings they submitted, that proposed as-of-right is just two-story building. So why not just alter the existing building and benefit from what is existing? You could put some columns, you could add some framing, but definitely, it's going to be much cheaper than knocking down an existing building and putting a brand-new one. So if if they go that route, I would, I would say the construction cost that I believe it was inflated somehow, could go down significantly. And instead of way above $400 per square foot, it could go significantly lower than that. The I I see costs, I see items, construction items that are not needed at all, like the six-inch slab, you can use the existing one. That would be like very helpful, that that demo, like I said, it could be eliminated even partially, could be some minor demo for the alternation, for the alteration. Some some other items, they have like cost premiums that are like so high, like the structural steel, the excavation, the concrete, the footing. I believe all these kind of like, I would call them games in construction cost are done intentionally to push up the cost for the as-of-right, so kind of make it not feasible, or add hardship to 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 the project. So these these kind of things need to be fixed. They need to respond to why they just used 11,500 out of 1600
Yeah, out of 16,000.
I'm sorry, 16,000. Yes, I'm sorry. Thank you. Yeah, they used 11 and a half out of 16. I'm not sure why they did that. The other thing is they provided us with some photos, but they haven't provided us with a key plan. I haven't seen a key plan, I would say. So if they haven't provided one, they need to provide us with a key plan for the for the photos location.
Okay. Is that it?
And one more thing. During the last hearing, I believe I did inquire about a painting on-site. And I recall talking either to Ted or Chief Daley about that. And and if I recall correctly, he told me that they sent somebody, and it was actually some painting work on-site. And I believe if that was the case, that was for the cones that the manufacturer on-site. They get them like row white, and then they paint them to orange or gray. I'm not sure why this is not documented in their submission. What I saw is, again, an assurance that no painting on-site. Is that correct? Am I missing something? So I need, I need like assurance from the applicant. And if Ted and Chief Daley can can like, enlighten us on that, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to point out, though, that this is a, an extension of an existing variance, right? We're not looking at the variance from scratch, right? So if this had been a new application for a variance, where they say, I have an existing building with as many square feet, this it's a going commercial concern, and I want to demolish it to put residential, we'd have a whole different analytical method, right? The reason that we have review of a financial on the on a renewal is be an extension of a term, basically, right, is because it says in the resolution that we should be looking at financials. So yeah, so what you've got is a going concern, going commercial use that exists because of our variance. And and then you're looking at the loss factor of actually closing the business, gut renovating, partially removal, you know, partial demolition, if you do it the way you're talking about, et cetera, which is clearly a more expensive pursuit than continuing to operate a commercial business that received a variance in the past. So I, I want to take away a little bit of the sort of the teeth that we might be using if it was a new variance, because of course, it's been existing use for a long time. Okay.
I would say because of because of that, because of that part in our resolution from the previous board, regarding looking into financials with that, I'm tending to look at this as if it's an evaluation for a variant. So if if today, the variants sound like it's it's not feasible, I wouldn't be sympathetic with them and just grant an extension. If 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 they fail to prove it to us, that they still have hardship comparable to what they got before, I would be tending to say, no, you don't have a right to continue that. That's how I understand the recommendation or the condition from the previous board in our resolution.
Okay. Commissioner Shabeta?
I agree with the statements by the chair and the co-chair. I am vice chairman, sorry. I, with regard to the spray booth, they did put statements that that there is no spraying happening at the location. I share Commissioner Sheta's concern. I just want to be sure that that spray booth has been removed. They said that the proposed plans had it as removed, but I don't know what the current status is now. So I'm looking forward to hearing about that. And I, I have nothing further to add on this.
Okay, I'm gonna, Shonda's hand up for just one second. Mr. Rick has his hand up, and he's our compliance officer. So please unmute yourself and speak.
Hey, good afternoon, Board. This site I have not visited, only because fire department did send out a representative. I do believe they said they were not manufacturing the cones. I do not know if the booth is in fact there. I believe they did not see a booth. I think they saw an oven. So I'm not sure if John may be able to provide more information.
Right.
That was it.
Okay.
The company that's responsible for the cones, I believe, was the RK Safety Lease, which has another location in Brooklyn that they claim to do their production in. But again, my concern with that oven in this area, and hopefully it's currently removed.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Shonda?
Yeah, I just, I just had a question with regards to the as-of-right question, because I'm looking at C002. So the zoning allows 16,000 square foot of floor area on this site. And the applicant, based on its as-of-right development, is proposing 15,951 square feet. So it's not a lot of floor area that has been left on the table. I just want to be clear about that.
Oh, so it's not 11,000 something, something?
No, it's the total floor area, including first and second floor, is 15,951 square feet.
Ah, 15,900. Yeah, okay. What, you're looking at which drawing?
This is C002. This was the as-of-right, let me just look at, this was also submitted. It was the confirming as-of-right plan.
What, what date?
It was June, it was a June 10 submission package.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm looking at the same, and I can see that.
Okay, so so at least the as-of-right is using up basically all the floor area.
Yeah, and the reason they cannot go up to the third floor is because just the first two floors is picking up all the floor area.
Right. Okay. Okay. Any other comments on this one before we move on to the next? Okay.
Okay, next item is 5106 BZ, 18802, Union Turnpike, Queens.
Statement of facts was revised to include the dance school as part of the extension request, which is what we had asked. I didn't, however, see any statement that goes through the findings to establish continued need, or whether there had been changed conditions. It's something that I had asked for at the first hearing. They didn't mention that. With respect to ADA access, the statement of fact states that the dance studio has access to the elevator through the PCE. I'd like to understand how that works. You take the elevator down, and then how do you get into the PCE? Because they're not connecting spaces. Does it mean you have to go through the fire stair? I just didn't really understand how it works. And I just want to note to everyone and to our council that the that the request is to extend the hours Monday through Thursday to 12:00 AM, which was originally 11:00 PM. Commissioner Shonda?
Okay, so I did go on a side visit a few weeks back, and the banners from the window walls have been removed from the dance theater. And I did have concern about what's happening in the rear yard. The rear yard has been cleared. It seems to be only mechanical equipment. So I'm okay with that. In P7 drawing, the sign, and also the sign analysis chart for all other establishment provided, is not associated with the terms of the variance. And the table should include only the PC and the dance studio, and not all the other commercial businesses that are part of this super, that is part of this entire commercial building. It should be by each talk, each business operation.
Each establishment is a zone.
Each establishment that is only relevant to this variance, which is the PC and the dance theater. I don't think we should have anything in the drawing that shows all the other establishment and their signage, because they will have to comply as of right on their own. Just makes it easier for everybody.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Commissioner Oatley Brown?
I don't have any additional comments.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Sheta?
I'm here. I don't have any further comments on this.
And Commissioner Shabeta?
Nothing further from me, Chair.
Great.
Next item is 24503 BZ, 1611 Willets Point Boulevard, Queens.
Okay, second. Okay, a new set of drawings and cover letter was submitted on Friday, June 29. I don't know if everyone saw that. The drawings have the same revision date as those submitted on June 8. So I actually can't tell what the difference is, and the cover letter doesn't explain. No bubble set was provided, so I reviewed the drawings that were submitted June 8, because I couldn't figure out what I was supposed to be looking for on June 29. So maybe the applicant can help us with that. Sound propagation data and and a section was provided for the menu board. And I'm curious why the level isn't shown at 48 dB above the fence in the section, but is in the plan in the green area. What will attenuate the sound below to below 48 dB, because 45 dB is the maximum allowable at the residential property line above the fence? So it seems as if they rely on the fence to bring it down, but then there's propagation above the fence, and they don't talk about any kind of attenuation. So I needed, I didn't understand that. Also, lighting levels are just above point one over the property line. That's very low. So maybe it doesn't matter, but usually we say zero. At previous hearings, we said landscaping should be dense where there's room to do that. So that really should be a staggered double layer along the residential property line. There's, there's part of the property line where it's very fat, and they're only putting one row of trees. And we've talked many times about how successful the staggering is. And so you do two rows alternating depths until you don't, you don't have any space, and then that creates a much denser buffer. And I'd like them to clarify the height and type of the fence on the plans. Commissioner Shonda?
I had no additional comments.
Okay. Commissioner Oatley Brown?
No comments.
Okay. Commissioner Sheta?
Nothing further from me, but I, what I understood from the cover letter that came with the, with the drawings regarding the sound issue, and I, I hope I didn't understand it right, but that's what I got. They are counting on the window, aim to do some kind of sound attenuation. So if this is the case, I believe this is not acceptable to us.
Right. I agree. Okay, and Commissioner?
But I, 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 I want to add something positive. I don't want to be like negative all the time. We're gonna, we're gonna look at like probably three or four projects with sound plot. And every time I look at one of them, the sound engineer start describing what the analysis he's done. And he says, we're using AVC automatic voice control. It sends the level of the output 15 dB, dB above the ambient noise. If the ambient's 45, the output is 60, which is 15 plus 45. And when you look at the plot, in this project, it's 45 plus 15, it's 60. If you look at the red, the red says it's 60. But on the other three or four, and I'm struggling with this, it's not 60, it's 36. They start saying the same thing. 45 is the ambient, 15 is the AVC capacity above the ambient total is 60. But when you look at the plot, you look at the red, the red says it's 36. This is a puzzle that need to be solved in the other three projects. But in this one, I believe it was much more clear. So I thank them for that.
Okay. Well, we'll, we could talk about whether that becomes the standard, but I'm not sure we know yet. Thank you. And Commissioner Shabeta?
The only thing I'd like to add is that we still haven't, I believe you may have mentioned this, Chair, we still haven't received the type of fence that they're using. I know they went into some detail about how it is going to arrive at zero decibels, et cetera, but I'm sure they have a fence if they're doing this type of analytics. If they could please provide us that information.
Okay. Thank you. All right, next one?
24, item number 19, 2409 BZ, 7810, 164th Road, Queens. Please remember, this is a review session, no public testimony.
Right. So this one, I just to clarify for commissioners, the applicant originally requested an adjournment until next year, because for, say, obvious reasons due to COVID, they're not really able to proceed until then. However, that wasn't the main thrust of our discussion on this application. It was about the neglected site, the storage on the, on the, on one of the lots of all of this miscellaneous kind of debris in, in big storage containers, and also an open trash, and also illegal use of a couple of buildings that they own for commercial purposes and as opposed to residential purposes. So they were supposed to have addressed that, and we never saw anything on it. So I wanted to hear about what they're doing to improve the conditions on the site, even if they're not able to move forward sooner on the application itself. Any other, any other comments on this one?
No.
No, so it's because this is really, they're not going to speak about the substance of the case. Okay, so then I would like to take a, no, just a second. I would like to take a 15-minute break after Tony announces this is the end of the review session, because our hearing in the morning ran really late. And so commissioners are trying to grab things to eat quickly. So it's 2:37. So say 40, 55, say we come back at 5:00 to 3:00. Does that work? Everybody?
Okay, so this concludes the public review session for June 29, 2:00 PM session. We'll resume at 2:55 with the public hearing.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
If others can hear, please join in. Ready to rock and roll. We're on YouTube, but we're not recording.
So we're ready?
Yeah, ready to start recording. Okay, good afternoon. This is the Board of Standards and Appeals, Public-
Okay, good afternoon. This is the Board of Standards and Appeals Public Hearing for June 29, 2020. This is the 2:00 PM session. Please only call in during your specific application. The first application is 20768 B C, 115-58 Dunkirk Street, Queens. This is the office of Jerry Caliendo.
Oh, okay. When you can hear, state your name. State your name if you can hear.
Good afternoon, Sandy Anadino Stu, representing the applicant. And I'm joined, they're in the waiting room, by Steve Green, the property owner, and also the two tenants of the building, because at the last hearing-
State your name. Of whoever it is. Turn off your YouTube video. We have somebody named Maurice Bioli. Is that one of you?
Yes, he's the cost estimator.
And somebody with the last three digits of 211. Who is that? And state your name and the application.
Yes, my name is Joseph Sweeney.
Is that one of your, is that person with you?
No.
Yeah, Joseph.
Are you calling for 20768 B C, sir? 115-58 Dunkirk Street?
No, I'm calling for the McDonald's on Francis Lewis Boulevard.
Okay, we're gonna do that later, so you need to-
Okay.
Later, okay? Listen on the YouTube video, and when we announce that case, dial in, okay?
Okay, you don't know, I'm not on, I don't have access to the YouTube. Do you, um, do you know what time it-
Okay, I tell you what, let me, I don't know if I can change your name here. It's not working. Oh, can somebody make me a host? And the administrator, please make me a co-host, so I can, yeah, thank you. Okay, so tell me your name, sir, and which case you're on for.
Yes, it's Joseph Sweeney. And it's for the case, it's McDonald's and College Point Boulevard and Francis Boulevard in Queens, Queens.
Okay, so I tell you what, we're gonna put you in the waiting room, and when the case comes up, we'll admit you, okay?
Thank you, girl.
Okay, so send him to the waiting room, please. How do we do that? In waiting room, I just did that. Okay. Barbara Cohen, is she-
Yes, she's the financial consultant who did the financial analysis.
Okay, so we just admitted her. Are you waiting for anyone else?
Um, Steve Green.
Yeah, I don't see him. No, don't see him. Can we proceed?
Um, okay, so I heard the-
I swear you in. Hi, I'm sorry. Gotta swear you in.
Oh, yes, yes.
Raise your hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board to respond honestly to the board on my questions?
I do.
Yes.
Other people too? Okay, great.
Okay.
So I watched the review session earlier, and I noticed, I noted the board's comments. Notification of the hearing were sent out to the adjacent property owners within 400 feet as the board requested. The illegal extension in the back, we submitted photographs while it was in process, and it has now actually been removed. It took a while because of the pandemic. People were not working, but it's gone, and we will submit photographs showing that. I actually have them. I just haven't sent them to the board. I didn't want to send them in today, but we'll submit them for the record. That was removed. We provided a landscaping plan with planters, and that was the proposal so as not to interfere with the parking layout, because that parking lot is used by the employees. There are eight to 12 employees for the one tenant, and two to three for the other, and they do use that area for parking their vehicles. I know that in the past, there was an issue with storing outside, and we have photographs. That area has been cleaned up, and the landlord has made it, Mr. Green has made it clear that there is no work and no storage to be going on in that open area. So his tenants understand that they can't be using that anymore.
Sorry, yeah, before you go, there was, there's a Mr., someone Miller in, is that your client? Miller?
It could be. His name is Steve Green, but-
Oh, no, no, okay. And then there was someone else with a phone number, but they disappeared. Okay, all right. Continue, I'm sorry. But I just want to say before you do that, the board never accepts planters because they're not viable. And the other part of it is, we want a dense buffer, so instead you should be looking at a site plan where there is parking laid out in parking spaces that are shown on the drawings, and in addition to a good depth for a planting bed that allows for dense buffer between the residential use next door and this property, because let's just say the behavior on the property has not been upstanding all these years, so the kind of assurance from the owner isn't enough. We like to have ultimately what is an architectural solution, when we can have one, and planting often functions that way, so not really-
The applicant is proposing a five foot, eight inches deep planter, which is reasonable, so one could achieve a lot. And I think in that depth of five foot eight, definitely low, low planting, medium grade planting, along with an opaque fence all along the entire length of the property lot line, definitely can be achieved without having to reduce the distance between the aisle and the parking area. I'm just going by the plan.
Yeah.
So right, right now, there is a six foot, at least six foot high wooden fence on the side property line, which is the property line shared with the residents, and that extends all the way to the back of the garage. But then, the subject property actually goes further, and there is a property line that's, there's actually an industrial building and a wooded area further back. So that residence, that residential property line ends at some point. So the planting, if we were to provide landscaping, would be along the residential property line. That would make more sense, because the rest of the area is all wooded and is industrial. And then in the back is all railroad tracks.
I, yes, I agree. I think it should be along the residential property line, which is, which is specifically Lot 125.
Right.
So it's, it's the, it's the frontage of, the lot frontage of 138 feet, the side lot line of 138, and possibly even the 40 foot along the rear, which wraps around the garage.
So the fact that there's a wooden fence there, and then we would provide a planting bed, it's just an area where we didn't think would be able to be maintained, and there is already a fence there, a wooden fence that's six feet high, so-
So it goes like this. A fence does one thing, and planting, and I see Commissioner Ollie Brown's hand up, and planting does another thing. For one, when you do a dense buffer, the trees grow tall. When you give them enough room for their tree balls to flourish, especially like Arbor Vite, which is a really fluffy, wide evergreen, the trees grow tall, and they obscure the, the behavior of the commercial tenants. A fence only does so much. So trees do, do, they obscure their sound barriers, and they improve the look of the commercial site, which I just always reiterate, these are residential districts into which a commercial use has been imposed, and there needs to be respect for the residents. So I don't, this isn't negotiable, and it can't be low planting. It's, when I say dense buffer, which we've talked about before, we stagger the planting, so that you have one row, you've done this on some of your applications. There's one row, and you stagger the next row, and that way the infill is complete. So that's what should be pursued here, and it should go all along the shared residential property line. And when you just look at the site plan, yeah, you don't have to do it along the shared commercial industrial line, but there is a residence there that's a very nice building, and there should be those, those residents. I'm gonna recognize Commissioner Ollie Brown, and admitted Mr. Green into the, into the Zoom room, and he's connecting to audio at the moment, okay?
So if you look at the photos that you submitted to show the progress you've made on cleaning up the site, the wood fence that you're talking about is actually covered with some kind of netting or aluminum fencing on the inside of the lot. And also, if you go to the next photo, so that was the first photo, and if you go to the, let's see, ah, if you go to the, to the second photo, you'll see that there's also an aluminum fence that's in very bad condition with slating that has been ripped up. Can you see that?
I believe that area is in the back. That's along the rear property line.
That's along the rear, because it looks like it's along the side, but you could see the house right next to it, looking over it.
I don't think this is, I don't think this is the rear. I believe, I'm looking at the same picture.
I believe it's the side.
Oh, you're stalking the, okay, on the first, on the photos, on the first page, okay?
Yeah.
Yes.
So that, if you're gonna tell us that that's an example of that you have a good wooden fence on the side lot line, I'm not in agreement about that. It still looks like patchwork, and it looks pretty dilapidated, so you're gonna have to really clean that up, and then definitely put in landscaping.
Okay. So you would want to see screening along our fence, because that, that wooden fence is actually on the, the residential property owner's fence. The chain link fence belongs on our property, so you would want to see screening, opaque slats, and landscaping?
Yes, because as explained, landscaping is a different thing from a fence, right?
Right, and, and also, if you look at that fence, whether it's their fence, and you've done something to it, or it's your fence, it's, it's in dreadful condition. The appearance is horrible.
Yes.
The wood fence is the adjacent residential property, and the chain link fence, it's like a double, the chain link fence belongs to the subject property, so it's the two fences.
But I mean, if you try, you know, I think the best way to always imagine this is, imagine you live in that house. What would you want to see? What would you complain about to the neighbors? When they're dumping all this stuff, when you look at your window, and you wish you were seeing birds, and instead you're seeing all this junk in the side yard, and, and the property owner of the building that you're, where you're renting an apartment is just like defensively putting up fencing material and having to go to the expense. You have to go to the expense of putting up defensive fencing, because the neighboring commercial building is so disrespectful. The only way to do this, and to understand it, and to not negotiate with us, is to say, I live here, and my windows overlook this, and what would I want to see if this was my apartment, okay? I can't explain it any other way. We're trying to, you know, imagine, empathize, et cetera, and even if the neighbors don't come to give testimony because they can't, they don't have access to the internet, they don't understand what the BSA is, they don't understand what this application is, we have to empathize on their behalf, okay? As should the applicant. Did you add anything, Commissioner Ollie Brown? No, oh, you muted yourself, okay.
We, we understand, we're sensitive to that. We understand the board's concern.
Okay, okay. So also, I'm just asking, because I see people in the waiting room. I'm, there's someone whose last three digits are 519. Is that one of your-
I believe that's one of the tenants.
Okay, so I'm gonna admit that person, and we'll find out. And also 621?
Yes, and I don't know what happened to Mr. Green. I don't see him here.
Green, we admitted. Uh, I did admit, I don't know if he's here.
Okay, so, so-
Wait a second, I just need to clarify, because I admitted people into the waiting room, okay? The person whose, whose last three digits are 519, telephone number, no.
Yes, that's me.
What's, what's, what's your name, please?
Stephen Green.
Oh, you're Stephen Green, okay, thank you. And please turn off your YouTube video. Please turn off your YouTube video.
Turn off the video?
Yes, we hear it as feedback.
Okay.
Okay, and then we also have someone who, whose last three digits of their phone number are 519. If you can hear me, please identify yourself. With digit 519 as the last numbers of their phone number, can you identify yourself, please?
That's either Alex or Danny.
Um, please identify yourself, 519. Can you hear us? They're not muted.
Oh, that's, wait, Steve, you're on two lines? You could drop that one. That 519 is Steve Green's cell number. You, you're calling from two-
Oh, may, oh, maybe because from my computer, I couldn't get the video, so I called on my phone.
Okay, so he's-
You don't need to drop it as long as we don't get feedback, so that's-
Yeah, you're on the phone and the video, okay.
Yeah, I dropped it, I dropped the video, because I didn't think it was coming through.
All right, so I'm naming you Steve Green. Okay, fine. All right, let's continue, sorry.
So, so, so Madam Chair mentioned that there was from aerial photographs debris on the roof. I'm not aware of it. I haven't gone up there, but Mr. Green should take a look at that and have it cleaned up, and also make any repairs on the sidewalk, any broken curbs in front of the rolling doors, and, I think there was mention of painting, painting, the facade.
Let me just go on the, the issue of the curbs. There are these rolling doors, which, when you look at the lines, looks like you drive in through the rolling doors. There needs to be an actual curb there. I don't see a curb. I see, I mean, a curb cut. I don't see a curb cut. I see broken curbs. So if that's an active driveway, it needs to be, it needs to be corrected to be a properly constructed DOT allowable curb.
I believe there are three curb cuts, one in front of the parking area, and one in front of each of the rolling doors. If, I believe that's what's there. And they, they, we found records for those curb cuts in the building department records.
Okay, but if, if those are curb cuts, right now, when you look at the draw, when you look at the photographs, they're broken curbs, right? They don't look like curb cuts. They look like curbs that have been driven over and squished. So they need to be rebuilt as proper curb cuts, if there's a permission to have proper curb cuts. Okay?
Okay, so then we would have to file with DOT, and we'd have to get permits to do that work.
I don't know. You know, because we don't have the DOT, the DOB records of where there is an allowable- I don't know, you know, because we don't have the DOT, the DOB records of where there is an allowable curb cut. But if you've got a door and the trucks are driving into that door, it's got to be through a curb cut, you can't drive over a curb.
Okay, so we'll, we'll address that. Also, there was, Madam Chair mentioned that their concern, the concern is that the use group 16 could be an automotive related use. That's not a tenant that the property owner is looking into and he can speak to that. But of course, board could put a condition in the resolution to exclude that particular use. But I don't think, that's not a use that the property owner is looking at. What he wants to do is continue the use group 16 and 17, which is what the two tenants that are occupying the building and they're supposed to be here today, but I could speak a little about what happens there. The, the main tenant is a safety equipment tenant and I can, they actually sent me the link to their website and their catalog of the products that they have. Nothing is manufactured in this building, everything is manufactured overseas. And, and I think Commissioner Sheta mentioned, they, they do have a Brooklyn location, but nothing is manufactured there either. They use this building at Dunkirk Street. They have one area which they use as an office and they design these products. The other area is storage and there's another area where they actually package their products. And then they, the UPS picks them up and they ship them out. There's no manufacturing, there, there's no painting and there's no oven on the premises. From what the owner told me, he occupied this building from 1981 to 2012. And at that time, there was no oven at the site. And he occupied it as a furniture, part of it was Castro convertibles, Mr. Green, up until 2012 when his business closed. There was no oven at the time, but they were painting the furniture. There was a spray booth, but that spray booth was removed in, in 2012. And I believe the problem was, there was some plan in the building department, an old plan that we ref, that we looked at, but those, that oven and that spray booth have not been there, they've been removed. And the, the current tenants don't use that because they're not painting or, or making anything or baking anything or manufacturing any of those products on the site.
Okay, we, you know, we were asking about it because it was shown on the drawings.
Yeah, we copied it over from some other plan. Unfortunately, due to the pandemic, I did not go to the site recently, but I will go and take interior photographs just to verify that it's not there. But Mr. Green can speak to that because he tells me that those were removed a long time ago. And I actually in the file found a letter from a previous applicant and counsel where they talk about the spray from dated 2003, where they talk about the oven removal and, and spray booth from the last, the last grant.
Okay, well, we'll just, you just need to verify for us and we'll ask the fire department also to comment on this. I believe they did an inspection.
Yes, they did actually, and they, and they, in January, the fire department issued a letter of no objection.
Right, okay. Okay, let's move on.
May, may I speak?
Yeah, go ahead. Say your name.
Yeah, you know. Yeah, my name is Stephen Green, I'm the.
I have to swear you in, Mr. Green.
Yeah, just a second, you could be sworn in because you came late.
Okay.
Okay, do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, another of the truth before, in your testimony before this board? And to respond honestly to four member questions? Would you say that again?
Yeah, I do, I do, I will.
Proceed.
Okay, I, I, I have a, a couple of points to make. First of all, there is no spray booth or oven there. But yeah, I, I, I'd like to address the, the the bushes you want us to make in the parking lot. Of course, we'll do it if you, if you insist. But it seems to me, you aren't considering the, the total hardship that that would bring upon first the neighborhood, there's a, there's a scarcity of parking in that neighborhood. And if you put those bushes in, that's certainly going to reduce the number of vehicles that you can park there and it'll have to try to park on the street, which will compete with the neighbors who now have hard, hard, or parking. Second is, the, the, the second hardship is a hardship on me, the landlord. I mean, I've been giving concessions to my tenants to stay because of the COVID. And even future tenants, if they have no place to park or less place to park, they're going to have to maybe look elsewhere. I have one tenant who reaches up in July who is deciding whether he's going to stay or not stay and parking would be one of the considerations. And I've given him a pretty considerable concession on his rent. And even future tenants will consider that. So it will, it will put a hardship on the, on the neighborhood, a hardship on the landlord and a hardship on the tenants, which is not needed, I don't think. I understand there, there has to be a border between us and the, the commercial
The resident.
Commercial residents next door. But the fence has been a, a, a thing. Now, there's no way that they won't be able to see our building because it's next door, even though there is a, a fence, a wooden fence which blocks their view, except if you're on the second floor, you can see over the fence, obviously. But the bushes aren't going to prevent that, certainly. What, well, they will produce, they'll, they'll, they'll take up space and they'll, they'll provide a hardship on everybody concerned. They had. Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I, because I, I just, I, we, we hear you, right? So I have two things to say about that. First, the drawings already show planters being offered, right? And the planters have a depth of five foot nine inches, almost six feet, right? If instead those were in-ground planters, you'd, it's the same distance, right? We never see parking spaces shown on the lot to show how many cars that you get in there. And in, and actually, just the reality of the history of this site, we didn't see parking there. We saw the side area being used for storage, outdoor storage, which is not what it's allowed to be used for. So we use planting as a way of both preventing outdoor storage, as a way of understanding exactly how many parking spaces there are because that way it'll be shown on the drawings and that's the way that you're going to park. And then I just repeat, you know, of an abbreviation of my mantra, you live next door, you live on the second floor. How do you feel about looking out your window at this use when the bushes, as you describe them, because really they effectively become trees, where they grow to between eight and 10 feet high, will obstruct the view of the activity for the people who are living on the second floor? And it's an enormous improvement over, for the quality of life for those people. And if you imagine you live there, how much better your life would be. So I'm not persuaded that you won't get a lot of parking there. And we understand in terms of, you know, the, the subject of the COVID crisis is obviously weighs heavily on everyone. But we can't forget that we are also dealing with neighborhoods and the neighborhoods have to live with these, these variances for a long time, if not permanently. And to lower our, our standards, really. It's one thing to give you more time to do it, but it's quite another to eliminate standards that improve the quality of life for the community. So.
Um, yeah.
Well, you're, but even, even taking your argument that it may improve the life of the people living on the second floor, you're providing a hardship to the general neighborhood because it's, my blueprint shows that it's, and, and the board had approved previously parking for 10 cars. Now, this particular tenant may have used some of it at some time for, for, for storage, but he probably is moving out, his lease is up. Future tenants certainly, you know, that's the only parking on Dunkirk Street, the only legal parking on Dunkirk Street for the whole, and that's about at least a half, three quarters of a mile, the only legal parking. That's why parking is such a, such a, a problem there. And I saw one of the blueprints that, that, that the board had provided us with 10 spots for parking. Now, a future tenant, if there's no parking, they'll go to the streets.
Well, your proposed drawings showed 10 spaces, are you saying more?
But a different layout, like before it was 10 and they were parallel parked, but now it would have to be like one space behind the other, which it, it, it changes the maneuverability. It does affect it.
Sorry, not.
You all get 10 cars in, the, 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 it was parallel on an angle, you've got 10 cars in there. But to get, to get cars in and you have a bush, you're not going to be able to do that.
You never had enough.
Prior to the, prior to the, the bush.
Sorry, you never had enough space to do angled parking and still have a drive-by lane. This way, you have 20 feet or minus the, so you have 15 feet or so for a drive-by lane and a, and eight-foot parking that is parallel against the building. I mean, people park parallel against curbs for, that's how you park. Right? So I'm not really sympathetic to that.
Yeah, but how many cars, how many cars can you get in that way? You're not getting 10.
Going a total of 10 spaces is the same.
Can I be clear, can I be clear? There are 10 parking spaces of those. Five are parked in the back area. So you can drive straight in and then you can, when you're return, heading out, you have enough turning space in the back to come around face forward. It's only first five cars that are parked along the driveway and it's not that much of a backing in.
You have plenty of room to do, to move, actually. And you actually, since this is workers, you could even have 20 spaces in the back and you just need to have somebody say, hey, can you move your car so I can get out? Commissioner Ollie Brown has her hand up.
Yes, I just want to say that when we saw the compliance photos in the first hearing, it didn't appear that you were using that side lot area as parking. It looked like you were using that side lot area to store goods outside.
Right.
Yeah, but that.
They do use it for parking. The one tenant has eight to 12 employees and the other one has two to three and they park their cars there.
Well, maybe today they do, but not the photographs that we were provided. The photographs showed that whole area filled up with storage. And when you look at the satellite imagery, it showed it filled up with storage. So maybe you're going to change your approach now, et cetera. But we're going around in circles, I think we've. Circle. And we're very, we're very adamant that this is the way you have to approach it. The drawings show that it works, therefore it works.
Right, and, and I think if the applicant wants more parking spaces within the site, then the drawings need to be revised to accommodate that. And, and I, like, you know, you can do tandem parking since these are mostly employees who are going to be there for a fixed period of time. So there's, I don't think you need to have the, need to have each parking space be accessible to the driveway.
Yes.
We see a lot of that.
Okay, let's, let's.
The two aspects.
Yes, agreed. Okay. So I, I'd like to ask if there's any member of the public who would like to speak on this. There is someone in the waiting room named M. Miller, who I'm going to admit because nobody seems to know who that person is. And we'll find out. So the person who's labeled M. Miller, can you identify yourself and tell us what address you're speaking about today? Let me see if I can find the person. Connecting to audio, just a second. The person whose name is Miller, can you identify yourself, please, and say what you're calling about, what address? Mr. and Ms. Miller, can you identify yourself, please, and tell us what address you're calling about?
Your audio still isn't connected.
Oh, really, mine's showing, it is, okay. The person who identifies as Miller, can you state your name, please, and identify what case you're calling about? And turn off your YouTube video. There was, oh, I think they're having trouble with accessing audio because I see it reconnecting. Okay, so. Working. Mr. or Ms. Miller, can you identify yourself, please? Miller? Ms. Miller?
It keeps saying the audio is failing with X.
Say it again?
The audio is failing because every time we try to connect, it's only X more.
Oh, that's what the X means?
Yeah.
It doesn't, oh, okay. All right, apologies to the person who has been trying to call in, Miller. Maybe try again, dial the number again and we'll let, we'll let you in to speak. Okay, so how much time do you need? We're asking if the public would like to speak on this application. Tony, can you read the application number, please?
Sure, 20768 BZ, 11558 Dunkirk Street, Queens.
So if you're interested in speaking about 115 Dunkirk Street, please dial in as indicated on the screen. But what we hear is that some people don't have access to the YouTube video and they're dialing in, so that's a different subject. Okay, so Ms. Anagnostu, what, how much time do you need to respond to our?
So. Well, there were some more issues that were brought up in the review session. Should we discuss those now or about the use?
Oh, right, no, okay, so with respect to the use, it can't just be a general, and I see Commissioner Ollie Brown's hand up. It can't just be a general use group 16 use, you need to be specific about what, oh, and we didn't talk about the financials. The, it can't just be a general use group 16 use, so you need to be specific about the, the uses that you want to have included because the use spectrum is very broad and includes crematoria includes all kinds of things, so we can't say go forth and have use group 16, okay? You can talk about that with your client, you don't need to do that now, okay?
Well, well, okay, but so the approval that, the approval that was granted was for both use groups 17 and 16. 16 was limited to the area in the back, so storage area in the back. So this application is actually for a continuation of the use group 17 and use group 16.
I, I understand, but you need to be more specific about what it is because what we saw was evidence maybe of a spray booth in the past and so on. We need to be very clear that it isn't a broad 16 and a broad 17 use. It's an enormous amount of uses, many of which are very aggressive and not appropriate. That's an enormous amount of uses, many of which are very aggressive and not appropriate in a residence district. So speak with your client offline, come to the conclusion about which ones in the use group um, that seem to be similar to each other, that seems like that would be likely to be a tenant or is currently a tenant, and that's the one that we could consider. So Commissioner Oatley Brown?
Yes, um, do I need to repeat the financial questions that I had? Or are you set to just make those corrections?
I'm good.
For the report? Okay.
Short and sweet, always. All right, anything else?
Um, we submitted leases which showed the continuance of the use from 1981 up until the current day. Um, but we can also back that up with photographs from Google Street View. But the, there never has been a, a time when the building has been vacant. From 2015 to the present, the, the main tenant is the safety equipment. And, uh, prior to that, there was packaging of, uh, food products and, uh, storage, right?
Anagnostu, you don't need to go through all of this in front of it, you need to make that final, right? You need to submit to us proof of continuity since 2013. And you need to request specifically a waiver of the board rules under 1-07.3B3 and explain why there would be substantial prejudice if we had to give up this variance, okay? You don't need to go through it before us and we do need to take it on all the hearings, okay?
And just one question the vice chair had, uh, how much is the second tenant? How much area is the second tenant occupying? That would be the 2,466 square feet in the front of the building, use group 17. That area, uh, that's in the front, roughly, approximately 2,466 square feet as shown on our plan.
Okay, so why don't you do this? The question by Commissioner Shonda was, which leases represent which space? In your next submission with a cover letter, explain to us which lease represents which space on the drawings, how many square feet?
Okay. Okay.
All right, anybody else, any other, any other questions? All right, so, um, we've already asked public if they want to speak. I think we covered all the issues, right? So, um, just give me an idea of how much time so that we can assign a date accordingly.
Okay, so when we say ti- time for what exactly, what, what are we, besides?
Need to answer all this, so you're going to need to listen to this hearing again and listen to the review session, answer all the questions that were presented by the commissioners that you just responded to. Obviously amend the drawings to show the proper kind of planting, to show the, the parking as you requested, um, to show the proper curb cuts, et cetera. Just listen to the hearing again because I don't want to go through everything one more time and if you.
No, no, I, I mean, I just want to clarify, there's no physical work at this time, like landscaping. We would submit a plan first for the board to review.
Clearly, right. And we see photographs of all the illegal construction actually removed.
Yes, yes.
Um, ultimately, we need to see the fences significantly more than improved, replaced. They look terrible, right? So need to be replaced. So, um, but do that after we see the next submission with drawings. And also the financials obviously amended, okay?
Um, so I would say, well, I'm not sure how much time Ms. Cohen needs, but I would say eight weeks to respond to everything.
Is that okay with you, Ms. Cohen?
Oh, plenty of time to, to do that. And we'll, we'll clarify the, the costs and some other things as well.
Okay, great, thank you very much. All right, I think that's, we're, we're done with this case. Thank you very much and we'll assign, um, a continued hearing date.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Item number 17, 5106BZ, 18802, Union Turnpike, Queens.
I think I saw Ms. Ianati in the waiting room. Uh, except that I can't find, waiting. She's in.
When you can. Barbara, you hang up?
When you can hear us, Ms. Ianati, uh, state your name, please. What happened to her?
So she's still muted.
Oh, she muted herself. Unmute yourself, please. Amanda, unmute yourself and turn off your YouTube video.
Come on, people.
Maybe she's having trouble connecting to audio. Ms. Ianati, please unmute yourself. Can someone text her and ask her to unmute or ask her what's going on?
Should we admit, uh, Stuart Khan from the waiting room?
Oh, no, let's wait until, I don't know if he's related to this case unless you do. So I normally like to wait for the applicant's representative and then ask them if that's persons is related. I think she just dropped out.
Did I, is it working?
Yeah, there she is.
Sorry.
Sorry.
So before we go on, are, is Stuart Khan in your group, in your?
Yeah, he's the applicant.
Okay.
Hmm.
We're admitting him into the waiting room.
Okay.
The applicant's representative and then ask them if that's.
Turn off your YouTube, please.
Mr. Khan, please turn off your YouTube video because we get feedback, we can hear it simultaneously. And state your name when you can hear us. Mr. Khan, state your name, please.
Oh, Stuart Khan, merely the agent of the property.
Okay, so I have to swear you people in, uh, raise your right hand, Amanda. I, Mr. Khan, if you're not, just, so do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do.
Mr. Khan?
Yes.
Okay, proceed, Amanda.
Okay, Amanda Ianati, on behalf of the applicant, um, I heard the board's comments at the review session. I will be sure in the next submission to, um, add a statement of need and address any changed conditions to the statement of facts um, regarding, uh, the request to amend the plans of the signs. So if I may suggest, um, the signage is per frontage cumulatively of all the storefronts to, to show full compliance with the C12 district sign regulations. So if I would suggest we could hatch out some of the other storefronts just the way the other, uh, plan sheets, the floor plans look and like the floor area schedule looks, we could just hatch what's not subject to BSA approval?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
But that's for your information, not that it matters because you're under anyway, but it's, uh, um, the signage, um, surface area measurements are per establishment. So each establishment you gets to take advantage of their frontage times number to a maximum of, right? So you can have quite a lot of signs if you have a lot of establishments as long as they have frontage to measure against.
Right, well, the way the architect is actually doing it is they're calculating it per fr- per street frontage altogether.
Well, but so I think you comply anyway, fine. But if you didn't comply, you could go per establishment. So the architect being more conservative than is required by the resolution, it's fine because you comply.
Okay. Um, and then for the, um, the elevator, the dance school and the PC does have an agreement to share the use of the elevator. Um, you're correct, in the cellar, to access the dance school, if you go down into the cellar, you would have to go through, um, the, the, the fire stair, which is labeled stair access two, and then you would come out on the stage of the dance school.
Oh, how do you come out on the sta- then what do you do?
Uh, there's a ramp, there's a ramp down from the stage into classroom number two. And then there's just dividers that divide classroom number one and classroom number two.
So you go onto the stage and down a ramp and then you're in the classrooms? Okay, okay, great, thank you. Any other questions from commissioners on this? Okay, great, anything else you wanted to add? Great, okay, um, so then I would like to invite the public to dial in. Um, Tony, can you?
The case is 5106BZ, 18802, Union Turnpike, Queens. This is a push fitness club.
So there is someone in the waiting room who may not be related to this case, but I'm going to admit and we'll find out. So when that person can hear me, their last three digits are 211. Please state your name and the reason that you're calling.
Yes, my name is Joseph Sweeney.
Oh, it's. You for the next case, Mrs. Sweeney, next case.
I'll put you back in the waiting room and, uh, well, actually, yeah, we'll put you back in the waiting room for a second and then we'll call you next, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, I think, so I don't see anyone calling in on this. So I don't think there are any substantive questions. Oh, yes, we need to go through the findings, sorry. Okay, so we do need to put this on to, for a continued because you needed to go through the findings about why this variance is still needed and also.
All uses, correct? I think you need to address each use.
Yes. Or collectively, they're both PCs, right? So you don't necessarily need to go through why the dance studio versus the PC, et cetera. But, um, yeah, okay, just to make it, it shouldn't be very difficult, okay? So how much time do you think you need for this?
I don't think long at all.
Hint. Three weeks, two weeks?
I think two weeks is fine.
I don't know that we can accommodate it exactly, but we'll, we'll see how we do.
Okay.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, right. Okay, um.
Next item is 24503BZ, 160-11, Willets Point Boulevard, Queens.
So wait a minute, so that's not the one that Mr. Sweeney was waiting for? He was for College Point.
Yeah, but isn't that College, that's a McDonald's.
Yeah, but isn't there more than one?
Oh, yeah. No, the next, because the next one is, uh, the health care center, so that's not in, where's it, is that for tomorrow maybe?
I don't think we have it for today.
Yeah, no.
The other, the other McDonald's is in Brooklyn.
Oh, so let's, maybe he needs to be more specific, okay? I'm going to admit him and, um, well, actually, he's giving testimony. So why don't we, uh, wait until we get the applicant represented? Is Jared Jones an applicant rep?
I don't have, no, I don't know, I have Maria, you know, Papa Stover.
Okay. So let's wait for her and then, oh, say visitor, that must be her. That's just a, okay. Oh, Commissioner Oatley Brown, your hands up, please speak. Un, unmute yourself.
Unmute, unmute.
Yeah, that's what my hand was up about. I believe he wants to speak on this one because he said Francis Lewis Boulevard and that's one of the, the, um, streets here.
Okay.
That's what I thought, okay.
Okay, I'm going to admit him because he can't hear the hearing unless he's in the waiting room currently. So, and I'll rename.
To be examined because this is not a usual.
Please turn off your YouTube.
Hi, this is Maria Papa Savastos.
Okay, hi.
Um, Juan Reyes should also be on and Jared Jones is the engineer.
Ah, okay, so, so Juan Reyes, uh, is someone named Miller related to your?
Yes, that's the property owner.
Ah, okay.
And Joe Sweeney is from the community board, so he would also be for this case.
Okay, I just admitted him. And then we have somebody with last three digits, 363, is that one?
Hmm.
516 area?
That's probably Bill, the owner, Patrick.
Yeah, I'm Safe Hearth visitor.
363 is the owner, Patrick Miller, the applicant.
Oh, so we have two different Millers. Okay. Somebody with the digits, sorry, this is very strange, okay? And, um, if we can, if we have more people coming in, I'll ask about it, okay? So, okay, Juan Reyes is in say visitor, I'm going to change your name because otherwise the public doesn't know who's speaking, okay? Um, there we go. Okay, you can proceed, Tony.
No, are they, are they all in?
Yeah.
Okay, raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do.
I do.
Proceed, proceed.
So, sorry, before you proceed, there's somebody again, 516363, I should admit?
Yes.
And find out who that person is. They're not, it's not working. Oh, there they are. So the person, as soon as you can hear, the person with, um.
Patrick Miller.
That's Patrick Miller?
Yeah, I just got on, I'm sorry. I wasn't able to get on the computer, so I called in.
So that, you're Patrick Miller, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, let me sway you in. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, um, we heard the comments, uh, from this morning and just to go through the difference between our submission from June 8th to what we just submitted on June 25th, we got some updated sound data from the vendor. So we had updated that data in the plans. So everything is exactly the same in the plans except for the menu board sound exhibit at BSA 10. And that includes the new data that we received, um.
What, what's the new data? Because I, I looked and I couldn't figure out what was different.
The sound levels are different. So if you look in the notes at section AA, those decibel levels are different than what they were in the originally submitted from.
That me or you? Sorry, somebody, you have to, you have to mute. Everybody else has to mute because we're hearing people talking, so please mute yourself. Um, I'm sorry, so why is there a difference between one set of data and whole set of data?
We initially received sound data from the sound vendor, um, and then that data was updated, um, based on additional.
Yeah, but based on what, additional studies? Why was it updated?
Yeah, Madam Chair, they, they actually did a testing of this actual menu board out in field condition. So they did it in an open parking lot. Um, they took data at basically 1, 2, 4, 8 and 16 feet. So in order to simplify the diagram, I'm basically showing you what the output is at the 60 decibels at the, the menu board and then at 16 feet, which is down to the 36 decibels. And they continue it out there at 32 and 64 feet. So you'll see at 32 feet, we can expect it to be 30 decibels. And then at the 24 feet, which is, I'm sorry, at the, the 64 feet, which will be outside the property line, it would be at 24 decibels, which is that, the dark green area with the dashed, the dashed signifying, that's the part of the sound that's going to hit the sound wall. And the sound wall reduces it by 28 decibel, so it's basically going to be around zero at that point.
Okay, slow down because we, we, we're not on the same imagery. What drawing are you looking at? Which was it submitted? Yeah, where are you getting this, where are you reading?
This is BSA 10.
Okay, submitted when?
That was submitted, Maria, what was the day? That was submitted, Maria, what was the date, the-
June twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth.
So for us, it was stamp received six twenty-six. And now, let's start that again.
So, the, there's three circles right now or three circular shapes. The new data that the, the menu board supplier gave us basically stated that at, with the AVC on and ambient noise being forty-five, you would get sixty decibels output within the first foot from the menu board. And by the time it got to sixteen feet, it would be down to thirty-six decibels. I didn't show you the increments inside the, inside the first sixteen feet because it's roughly inside the car and really not relevant to what your ultimate concerns is with the adjacent, with the adjacent residence. So from there, doubling it out at the thirty-two feet, it's gonna drop another six decibels down to thirty. And then by the time it gets to sixty-four feet, which roughly hits the house, it would be down twenty-four, not including the sound attenuation material on the fence, not including any landscaping, anything like that. That's just in an open field what the characteristics are.
And to be clear, sorry to interrupt, Jared, that twenty-four is referenced in note two in that section.
Correct, yes.
Note two. Speaker system is designed to project fifteen decibels above ambient sound.
Madam Chair, in the, in the section up top. She's the first.
Okay. So there's some in note twos. Sorry, oh, that meant, note two below the section AA says, "Sound propagating up and over acoustic fence affixed to the existing fence is at a maximum of twenty-four dB." That's the one you're talking about.
Correct, yes.
Ah, okay, so that responds to my question, I guess. Where that, have this green area and the green is described as sound levels now, oh, I see. Sound levels are now described as up to twenty-four decibels, whereas before it was described as much higher and I was wondering then what do you do when it's over the fence? Commissioner Sheta has his hand up, go ahead.
And just quickly on that also, the forty-eight point one, that was an error in the cover letter, that was not the actual data. Just to be clear on that.
The forty-eight point one-
That was the footage and, and it was incorrectly stated as a decibel level.
Yeah.
So that's-
From the speaker-
So in, in future, when you submit a correction, tell us exactly what you're correcting and, and bubble the correction. Because we can't figure out what the difference is, the drawings are the same, right? And you're asking us to go compare, 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 it's exhausting, impossible to find, you know, where's Waldo, kind of thing.
Understood.
Okay.
Yeah, thank, thank you Chair, I'm looking at the previous submission. June, sorry, March twenty-seven. In that submission, you started with fifty-seven DBA around the menu board. And then it went down to fifty-one for the yellow and forty-five for the green and thirty-nine for the blue. And, and the latest, and I, I, for some reason, I haven't looked at the latest, the June twenty-something one?
Because it was all submitted on Friday, so if you already reviewed the case, you wouldn't have noticed.
Believe it or not, I, I did look at it, but I didn't put my comments in the, in the Word file. And I thought the only one we have is the one with the sixty, but I am, I, I'm willing to listen to your explanation. Why are we starting with thirty-six here instead of sixty? My, the reason I'm asking this is my understanding is that the way the AVC works, and I did read the memo and the field readings from the manufacturer with this AVC thing. They say that it usually sends the ambient noise. And whatever this is, it output or it produces fifteen DBA above, above that. So if the ambient's forty-five, the output should be sixty.
Correct.
Which was the one that is submitted early in June. But the current one, you're talking about not sixty, you're talking about thirty-six.
So to, to simplify the diagram, it's still the sixty output at the actual menu board and that's part of the, the data that I'm not showing you. So, from what I have from them, right, the first, the first foot is gonna be sixty decibels, then it's gonna drop down to fifty-four by the time it gets to two feet.
Okay.
Then when it gets to four feet, it drops down to forty-eight, and then when it gets to eight feet, it drops down to forty-two. And then when it gets to sixteen, it drops down to that thirty-six, which I'm showing, it's just for a simplification of the diagram, so you don't have four different sound levels in that area, which, again, I didn't think was the board's concern, what we're doing in the immediate area of the menu board, it was more about the residential.
But if it is, if what you're saying is, is correct, if I look at the submission from June twenty, from March, I keep saying June, March twenty-seventh, do, do you have that, this in front of you?
So it's a submission date?
March twenty-seventh.
I see a March eighteenth submission.
That's, this is the date I have on that, BSA dash zero ten point zero zero.
So we had, you're right, that there was a June eighth submission also, right? And the June eighth submission has a different set of criteria and now you're-
Even if you look at the June eights, like the Chair mentioned, if you look at the June eights, you're gonna see the edge of the yellow, yeah, the yellow, at this, more or less at the same distance, but the yellow, you know, it's a different, a different criteria or a different pattern. Right?
I'm not exactly sure which one you're looking at, but-
Oh, wait a second, so it's the submission that you made on June eighth, right? And unfortunately, oh, and the revision date is, well, they both have, that's another problem, please change your revision dates when you update your drawings, because we have no idea which one you're talking about, if we don't have a changed number. But the revision date is four fifteen. Um, that's the last revision date. So, which is the first version of four fifteen before you change the drawings on, on six twenty-five. Okay, so to be, to, to like, be clear, your yellow-
Extends to thirty-two feet in both, in both drawings. That doesn't make any sense, unless there is something just overridden on these, on one of these two drawings.
And it says the red is sound level decibels of sixty.
Yeah.
Up to sixteen feet and sound levels up to fifty-four decibels up to thirty-two feet. And then sound levels up to forty-eight decibels, which, which is the one I care about, that extends over the property line and hits the window of the neighbor. And that's the one where I was asking, then what, it's forty-eight decibels? And so I'm asking, why did the sound engineer, the one who gave you the data, all of a sudden change it from forty-eight to something else? But Commissioner Sheta's asking another question about the fifteen foot over ambient.
My, my, my point could be as simple as that. If you, what you're telling us is, believe me, the output is the same in both drawings. And I'm responding to you, I don't believe you, the reason why? Because if you look at the two drawings, in one of them, the yellow extends, which extends in both drawings to thirty-two feet. In one of them, the yellow is fifty-four, in the other one, the yellow is thirty. So how come the same output at the same distance from the same menu board produces two different sound intensity? It doesn't make sense.
Correct.
So Jared, I think that's just the comparison of the updated data from the most recent submission to the submission that we gave in earlier. And from what I understand, from what you explained earlier, is that the sound vendor had provided additional data based on studies that they actually performed. We were under the impression that that data was all accurate at the time that they provided it. However, when they actually did the field tests, we received additional data and updated our plans to make sure that they were the most accurate based on the field tests that they did. Is that all accurate, Jared?
Correct, yes.
But so that doesn't make sense because if you look at the data that you're giving us on the most recent submission and it says that the red's output, in other words, the person in the car is hearing the strongest number of decibels, which is thirty-six. They're not going to hear the person saying, "Can I help you, what would you like?" Because it's under area ambient levels. And, and we're understanding that, and so it makes no sense that that's the way the speakers would be set up and the speakers say that they're set to go to fifteen decibels above area ambient.
Commissioner, like, as, like, as I was explaining, right, I, in order to simplify, just so we had three colors, I can add in the one foot, the two foot, the four foot, the eight foot.
No, we're not, we're not asking you to do that, we, we totally got your point. And we don't buy this argument, the reason why is very simple as, like I mentioned. If you, what, let's, let's go over this point by point. You're saying that the output in the two plots is the same, right? Which is sixty DBA, correct?
Correct.
What you're saying is, instead of showing you the two feet, four feet, eight feet, sixteen feet, I just, I did all this and I showed you zero, even you didn't show zero, you showed us the sixteen and you considered this, like, this is the red, sixteen feet is thirty-six and this is it within this area, correct?
Correct.
Okay, let's go to thirty-two feet. And let's go to the current submission, at thirty-two feet, what is the DBA?
Right.
Which is the yellow, what is that?
Thirty, thirty decibels.
Okay, let's go back to the older submission. The one early in June, same output, which is sixty, right? At thirty-two feet, what is the DBA for that?
Fifty-four, just to speed this up.
Yeah, and again, that changed because of the data that they did, the actual testing in the field.
No, that, that testing didn't change and you know what, we have tons of other applications that we're looking at. The white paper from the manufacturer didn't change that, that, that data that they presented to us as field measurements. I haven't seen any changes, interesting that. If you're insisting that there were a change in the field monitoring, give us the old and the new and let's compare them and then prove yourself on these two plots. Right?
So, we have, I think Jared, there's a chart, right, of the decibel levels at the different, that you used to base your plans on?
Yes.
We can provide that chart, but it does say the decibel levels at each footage measurement. Um, and that's it.
So here, here's the thing to clean this, clear this up, if these are actual field measurements, then the person who did the field study, we get this often on traffic studies, we get it on other kinds of studies, right? If the person who did the field measurements actually went out there with a sound meter and measured, 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 they marked in a, in a report how they measured it. They measured it four feet off the ground and they measured it using this piece of equipment and here's a proof of their meter reading, it actually has a printout or some kind of log of this, as opposed to just sort of throwing it confusingly on a drawing where your last drawing completely contradicts the prior drawing, completely without explanation, right? So if you're talking about field measurements, then we need to see how the field measurements were taken, was it done in the middle of the night? Was it done where there was active cars? I mean, like, I, I don't understand how you can go from one to the other and not have any nuance on the drawings to indicate the change. It just looks like, you know, num, like a numbers game. And, and the critical thing is, yes, I agree that the acoustical fence and the planting is going to reduce the sound there with respect to the neighbor. But the, the, the section shows that the sound propagates over the fence. So either there's an acoustical barrier to prevent the sound from propagating over the fence. Or you have to demonstrate that by the time it goes to the fence at that height, it's lower than what a person can hear. And you can't rely on a closed window condition because that's not our standard. I wanna be able to open my window when I live here and not have to hear whatever it is, this, you know, two Macs and cheese with fries, I don't wanna hear that.
I mean, we're not relying on the windows' acoustical properties, by the time it hits the property line, it's well below ambient noise based on the new data. And the, the city's secret requirement's only required to be under sixty-five decibel at the residence, which would-
Sorry, sorry, I have to interrupt you right there, this is not a seeker standard, this is a neighborhood character standard. And this neighborhood character standard says, "I don't wanna hear about Macs and cheese," especially because the proposal here is a twenty-four hour window, which I don't agree with anyway, but at eleven o'clock-
It is not twenty-four hours, not twenty-four hours.
Okay, what time does it go till? What are the hours of operation?
We open at six and we close at midnight, Sunday through Thursday, and we close at one AM on Saturday and Sunday. And to be honest with you, that speaker facing that house, that won't be used at those hours, because we'll only have one person, the speaker, that will be used at those hours, is the existing speaker that faces the commercial bank. That speaker's generally, it'll be used at the, you know, from twelve o'clock till seven at night. That speaker after seven or eight, it's not gonna be used.
Well, then that's a restriction that we would place on it because I'm assuming asleep in my bed, it's one o'clock in the morning and I can hear Mac and cheese because ambient sound levels in the neighborhood dropped down dramatically late at night. So if-
The other thing, Your Honor, is, the other thing I would say is, when, when I've spoke with the neighbors about all of this and we, I'm a good neighbor, she's been there, they're taking trees and buffers down between us. They just cut two big trees that were between me and the house. They, they have no problem, I know you got a letter, they don't have a problem with the noise and we spoke to them about it, they have no issue with me doing this because they understand I am a good neighbor and I know Joe Sweeney's on the call to talk to this. Where, this, this whole, the, the second speaker is to speed service up and to clear traffic. It's to, you know, so we can take two orders at a time and move more cars through. At eight, you know, after eight or nine at night, it probably eight o'clock and we don't, you don't have that many cars going through, so you physically wouldn't have the people to man that, that, that audio. Like, you just use the same audio we've been using now. So, and, and again, the neighbors told me, I don't, I'm fine, Patrick, do whatever you wanna do, I know we're going through this and it's, it is what it is, but the neighbor's even given a letter, but she just cut down three, two trees last week, big trees, that buffered the, the buffer dust. Because she wants, she, she's fine with everything, so, but that, yeah, that's not gonna be going at eleven o'clock at night, you're not gonna hear it at ten o'clock at night. That speaker won't be operating late.
So we don't know that because we've never seen any information on that at all in this application. This is complete news to us that you're not gonna use that speaker at night. And so that would be a limitation on the use, that that speaker is not available after, say, seven PM, something like that, so we-
Well, I would do it later than that because the, the point of the second speaker is to move it. So if there was a school function and we knew, hey, they get, the school function goes to seven, there's a, a concert at Saint Mel's or Saint Luke's or at PS one ninety-eight, hey, you know what, we're gonna get a little rush, let's open it up. But for, for the, for the most part, we're not busy after eight and nine o'clock at night.
So either-
We're just not.
You kind of can't be half this, half that, you have to either commit that you're not using the speaker or we have to continue to consider the impact of the speaker on the resident. And as to the resident not complaining, I'm sorry, as to the resident not-
Not complaining, they're in our favor. It's not about not complaining, they're in my favor for do, do whatever has to be done, they're fine, it's not like, don't, Patrick, we're okay.
We hear you, we hear you. This is, this is a, a, a subject that the BSA is pursuing now very aggressively. I wanna say that neighbors who have been putting up with commer, aggressive commercial uses their entire existence in residence districts, do it because they're used to the idea that they just have to put up with it. But I'd have to say, if this McDonald's was located on Park Avenue and Seventy-seventh Street, do you think those people would put up with it? These are neighborhoods that are forced to put up with those kinds of annoyances and they shouldn't have to. And instead, we should be looking at how we protect neighbors who don't even know they deserve the protection. And that's what I really have to say about that. But so, let's just continue with the subject of finding out what the speaker levels are, finding out how we make sure that we reduce the sound from the speakers, assuming the speakers are going to be operating at least until sometime that the board doesn't limit. And then because we can't count on every once in a while, something happens in the neighborhood and that's how it's used. Either it's off after seven o'clock or it's never off until the other speakers are off. Um, it it just has to be like that. So I I don't want to debate this back and forth. Any other comments from commissioners on this? Okay.
All right. The comment about the details on the fence. We had provided that with an earlier submission, the acoustic fence details. So if there's anything additional needed other than that, um, let us know, but we had provided details on the fence.
Um, you mean as in as in a cut sheet?
The fence, it was like a sheet from the manufacturer.
Okay, but if you look at the drawings, it's just says acoustic fence material affixed to existing fence, sound deadening material. That's what it says on the drawings, right?
Yes.
So what's the height of the existing fence? What's the existing fence? Right? The drawings need to be specific. What is a fence? How high is a fence?
So that's at um, B S A two says the height of the fence or is it B S A one, Jared?
I'm looking at the drawing. I don't see the height of the fence on either of them.
And B S A one, it says six foot high vinyl fence, but I will clarify the note.
Really? Oh, it says it on the section as opposed to the plan.
Actually, I also calls it out on the existing conditions plan, but I will clarify the note.
Wait, but so we're not looking at existing conditions. We're looking at proposed conditions, okay?
It's an existing vinyl fence that this material is being affixed to. So the fence
Okay, so you need to call out because these applications last a long time. We need to know what it is was the base so that going forward, we know what to expect in case there's noncompliance, okay? That's why you repeat existing conditions on the new drawings, okay? Okay.
The type of the menu board specified on the drawings, like which model is this?
There's a sheet number B S A eight, which called which has the coats um, menu boards on it.
B S A eight.
Zero zero eight, which one is that? There are some some details over there. I did look at it, but I couldn't find it. If you can help me.
Double fifty-five is the menu boards um, that you actually have with the screen where you can pick the your what's your options are. The springway canopy, char the charcoal whitened C O D is where the actual speaker is.
Sorry, which one?
The springboard canopy, which is next to the double fifty-five coats.
That's where the speaker is?
The speaker is actually in the order, we call the order point.
Yeah, but what kind of a speaker is this? What is that? I I want to I want to take because the reason I'm asking you for this because I have seen two categories of speakers. One of them is with sixty D B A output, the other one is with eighty-four. And we want to make sure that the one that you're using is consistent with the sound plot that you're presenting.
So if I I'll I'll get you more data, but I'm pretty sure it's the same speaker. What's limiting it is the control system, not the speaker necessarily. So when they have when the A V A, when the A V H is installed or the A B C is installed, it's what limits the speaker's output, not the speaker.
Okay.
But I I will get clarification for you there, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Well, the same speaker as what? The the drawings actually don't tell you what speaker. It shows you the springboard canopy charcoal white, but it doesn't have a spec for the speaker itself, right? Um, and if you look at the drive through, obviously not. And if you look at the coats all day, single fifty-five, that seems to be a sign, right? The sign, right?
You thought that's the menu board.
The men the menu board, but doesn't have a speaker on it, just right? So none of those other things that are there, the double fifty-five is just a sign, right?
Well, it's it's not considered a sign by the D O B, but yes, it would be.
I don't care. I mean, it it's an information board. It doesn't have a speaker on it, right? So the only thing with a speaker on it actually doesn't tell you there's a speaker on it on the drawing, actually nowhere. You we just have to know because you just told us. So we don't know that this thing that's called the springboard canopy charcoal white has a speaker and we also don't know what kind of speaker. Right? So please, please give us that information. Sometimes we get specs on the or we should always get specs. So that's the other thing. If you're doing a sound study, shouldn't the sound study say? Uh, it says speaker system is designed to it doesn't actually name the speaker on this sound study. And the thing that's called a menu board sound exhibit, whether or not that's actually a menu board, I don't know. But it does. It actually nowhere mentions the type of speaker system as far as I can see. So how are they doing providing you with any data at all? We don't even know what kind of speaker it is.
I mean, I mean, the the manufacturer provided the data. They use one speaker for all of these systems in the country. So I can get the data for you and include it in the next submission. That's
Okay, good. Okay. Okay, so then any other comments from commissioners? So we are asking the public to call in, Tony.
Two forty-five oh three B Z one sixty-eleven Willets Point Boulevard, Queens. This is a McDonald's and I think Community Board wanted to speak on this. Mr. Sweeney?
Yeah.
Yes. Uh, this is Joseph Sweeney. I'm the chair of the committee, reference to the online news committee. I've been um, I chaired this a number of times over the years after the McDonald's had submitted an application for a drive through. Uh, any time that they've submitted requests and applications, we've had committee meetings. And we've always voted affirmative. Uh, the last time we met, we had an onsite meeting. I believe twice. Uh, we went physically to the site. We looked at the site. Uh, most of the considerations that the community was concerned about was dealing actually with the flow of traffic in and out. Uh, there was never a question about or did the turn the board receive any type of um, complaints about noise or whatever. So there's something, I guess, that they'll have to tangent to this particular meeting that they'll have to submit to you. Our major concern was the traffic. Uh, we made certain request and I think that they have met the might seem in their plan would would be appropriate for us. Uh, we did ask for a speed bump. We asked for a a stop sign before the traffic goes out into the sidewalk. Uh, they agreed basically all the terms that the um, member that the board members and the public uh, came at the at the hearing uh, that we had onsite and also at the public hearing. So I would have to say that this is one of the few particular uh, commercial sites in the in our community board that if there's ever a problem, they which there has not at any request that I've made, it's always been affirmative. Uh, so we're happy that they've been there for, I think, twenty-five or thirty years. They've been there. They've been good neighbors. And hopefully this sound system um, will be um, will will become act to be positive result. And hopefully you could speed the application up once that particular um, uh, sound system uh, is met to your standards in in the agenda. So that's basically my comment.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anybody else uh, who was already in who wanted to speak on this? No, I didn't see anybody in the waiting room to come in. Appreciate
Can I comment one more thing? Um, during each
Sorry, Mr. Sweeney, we're in a public inviting the public to speak. Let me just uh, make sure that there's nobody else from the public who wants to speak. Okay, and um, I just want to point out from Mr. Sweeney, there I don't actually see the stop sign on the drawings. Do we? Does anyone see the stop sign on the drawings? I see a, which is what we wanted, a proposed parking and rear sign from Willets Point Boulevard and another similar sign that's on the trash compactor, on the trash enclosure. But I don't see the stop sign and the other was a speed. I also don't see the speed bump.
So the speed bump is existing. That's just when they repave, it's just going to remain there. It's on the existing conditions, but we can certainly add that to the proposed just to make clear that that's going to remain. And we can add a reference to the stop sign. I don't know, Jared, if it's there, but it it should be there because we had agreed to that with the community board, so.
Yeah, I believe what we were lucky was, and I believe they agreed to uh, as the people exit um, the drive through, we wanted a stop sign that they were looking to some type of solar type lighting where it would blink, especially in the evening. So it that was for the public safety. So as they walk into the sidewalk, you don't want them to uh, release themselves and just drive right through. We needed them to stop as a safety precaution. I thought I saw that in the drawings. I'm hoping it's there. I'm not on Zoom. I'm on the phone, so I can't visually see that.
Now, I I actually don't see that. I'm looking at the the notes on the drawings and the circulation drawings don't show in the um, no, I don't see anything.
And I know Pat Patrick agreed to that. He's on the line. He will tell you that he agreed to that with the members and that's what I submitted to the um, I submitted that in the recommendations. I don't know why that's not appearing there.
Okay, so I I'm seeing some problems with the drawing, the concept of drawings, okay, Mr. Jones? Um, the proposed drawings have to show everything that's going to be on the site. So you what you you transport everything that's on the existing drawings that are going to remain and anything you're going to add. We shouldn't say, oh, it's on the existing drawings, so infer that's on the proposed drawings because what we're reviewing is the proposed drawing, not the existing in tandem with the proposed. You've got to get, you've got to import everything from your existing onto the proposed if it's going to remain. And then, of course, those additional features that were supposed to be there. Um, and then I just want to add again, the double width of planting should not be ignored. It's something that I'm serious about, whether or not the neighbor cuts down her trees, that's her business. Um, but there should be a double row of um, arbor v day where there's a thick planting, deep planting bed that's big enough to handle it. So it's a, you've got eleven foot four and seven foot three. Up until about that point, there's enough room for two rows of of arbor v day that are staggered and that creates the dense buffer that we're talking about. And especially right opposite the the speaker. So um, okay, I so I think we're any other comments from commissioners before we move on? We've been on this for too long, actually. So, okay. So how much time do you need to make these changes and to get us the data from the acoustical um, engineer who did those studies?
Jared, how much time do you think you need? You're on mute.
I I don't know. I gotta go talk to H M E and see how quickly they come back over to us. George, um, it's going to be my guess.
I'm sorry, say that again.
Some I would guess at least two weeks, maybe a little longer.
Okay, well, okay. Okay.
Just I I just got a submission. I'm not sure if everybody got this, but I just got a submission just now with the with the drawings and with the acoustic fence. Uh, a P D F with acoustic fence specs, I guess. The one with the drawings, it has a sound plot that send us back to the early June submission. So I'm 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 concerned now which which way we're heading.
No, that was just because there was the question about the acoustic fence. So I wanted to point to the previous data that was provided to see if that was sufficient. I was trying to save time by just referencing the prior submission so everyone could take a look at that. That's not new plans or anything.
Please don't do that like that. No, 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 no. What you're doing is creating chaos for yourself and for everyone.
Yeah.
Don't submit plans that have already been submitted. Never submit anything without a cover letter saying what's different about what you're submitting from what you already submitted. Don't try to jump the gun like this. We can't review these drawings while we're on Zoom hearing, so um, don't do that in the future, okay? Because now what we've got is a confusing triplicate submission and we won't know which is the last one in particular because set of drawings uses the same revision date, even though it's a later set from the previous one submitted. So I'm going to request that this one not be admitted and to submit. Just delete it.
It's just a reference to the prior submission.
Okay, no, but please don't do that because you're not you're not doing it in an organized fashion, okay? If you want to clarify in the future, then you'll make a submission and you'll compare them somehow and there will be a cover letter that explains it, okay?
So do you want me to email Vincent to delete it?
That out, otherwise it's going to drive us crazy.
At least at least the one with the plans, the P D F with the plans.
Well, the submission that they just submitted, I'll have it delete.
All things, going to delete the thing we just received today because we won't understand what 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 it is.
Okay.
And of course, we we won't look at this for another whatever, six weeks. And then we'll see, oh, my God, there's through four sets of plans now. Which one is the right set of plans? They all have the same revision date. They're all, yeah, we we can't do that, okay? Okay, so, all right, so we're all set a hearing eight based, a continued hearing date based on what we'll guess you need for a submission, which is probably at least about four weeks. And and again, I don't know where it will fit you because the hearing schedule is pretty packed. Um, but I appreciate your all attending and your testimony and also Mr. Sweeney attending from the community board. It's very helpful. Thank you.
And I do that be that next plans that are being sent out, that they be the updated plans be sent to the community board. Because I'm I'm surprised about the stop sign. We've been wanting that for the longest time. I'm shocked that that one thing we wanted is not in there. And that's not, I mean, so now I need to see those updated plans.
All updated plans um, have been sent to the community board and will continue to do so as required.
Okay, but maybe they're being sent by snail mail and Mr. Sweeney can't see them because, of course, the community board hasn't been operating. So if you could get his email address and um,
Yeah, we're operating. We're we're open.
Oh, you're open now? Okay.
The community board seven is open.
Okay, okay.
Email them as well, though, if that's easier.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. We're going to move on to the next case then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number nineteen, I'm sorry, Meg one?
Yes, please.
Item number nineteen twenty-four oh nine B Z seventy-eight ten one sixty-fourth Road, Queens. It's the firm of Brian Cave, which is um,
Mr. Most was
Jordan Most, thank you.
He's in the, he's in. Just give him a chance, Tony. He has to connect to audio. He's still connecting. Okay, Mr. Most, if you can hear us, state your name, please.
Unmute, unmute.
There we go.
You, Jordan Most. Hello, do you see me? I don't see.
You, but we hear you good, too.
Okay, all right, well, I guess that's it. You won't get the pleasure of seeing me then. Or the or the pain.
Okay, I have to sway you in, Mr. Mouse. So do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board to respond to the board member questions?
Yes, I do.
Okay, please proceed.
Um, so I heard the review, review session comments earlier. And uh, I guess in particular, really, the the chair mentioned I guess, just a couple of brief points with respect to uh, obviously that, as you said, the main thrust of the prior B S A comments, not necessarily substantively relating to the various issues that are obviously confronting that this nursing home right now. Um, but specifically on the point of containers, um, the use of I guess, at least one of the houses for um, some nonresidential uses. So specifically with regard to the containers, um, it's my understanding that those have been there for uh, many years, at least in maybe in excess of twenty years and that they're in fact fire alarmed and sprinkler. Uh, we can try and pull the paperwork on those. We can try and pull the paperwork on those. Uh, in fact, I was searching on DOB on Biz, and it's, it's hard to sometimes make connections between certain filings and uh, as to what they're specifically relating to. And I don't know if we can pull, I don't know what papers can be pulled from the Department of Buildings presently, but we, I can look to have that done, and in the effort to hopefully establish that, in fact, those, those those containers are in fact, I think, fire alarm sprinkler electrified there, and they're running through to the actual facility on the facility's lot. That's lot twelve.
Which is lot twelve?
The big, the, the big building, let's say, as opposed to the four out parcels. So we've got, we're on block six five, um, we're on block six eight five one. Lot twelve is, is the address is seventy-eight dash ten one hundred and sixty-fourth uh, uh, street, I think. I think I've mistakenly referred to it as road. So, yeah, that's that's the site. And it's, those containers are in the rear yard of the facility.
Right, so I'm just reading there from the resolution, just to clarify what you said. The applicant for states, and this is in the result, the previous resolution from two thousand nine.
Sure.
Meadow Park utilizes a detached garage between lots twenty-three and twenty-four, as well as nine storage containers located behind the existing facility to store other necessary supplies and equipment for the nursing care facility, um, and represents that the bookkeeping office and the various storage spaces are intended to be located within the Meadow Park facility, but due to the obsolete nature of the building and the resulting patients, Meadow Park has been forced to use these peripheral spaces for various operational uses. So what I'm getting from reading that, those were the, an aspect of the findings to determine that you, that the, the institution qualified for a variance. There, we see you now. Qualified for a variance, um, and so now because you need an extension of time to actually ultimately do this project, I think, so, so I understand that that was officially the condition prior to applying for the variance, and the argument given to the board for why you should get a variance because space is so tight that we have to have all these storage containers and use these other buildings.
Well, yeah, I think, well, part of the, part of, that's a, I, I would say that the storage containers, and that's not really what that variance was about, because the presence of those don't in any way ameliorate the, the problems that are in the current nursing facility, which is four people to a room, sometimes four to six people to a bathroom, those, the space is tight, yes, and because space was tight, containers of many years ago became, I, I guess, a necessity, right or wrong. But, and there is, my understanding, and my understanding is that the only spillover into the other buildings is to the building that is, uh, let's see, the address is one sixty-two dash twenty-one seventy-eighth Road. That's lot twenty-three. So that's on the south side and adjacent to the facility. And that's the space that I believe the FDNY and maybe your compliance officer had access to right around the time of our hearing back in November of last year. And there were photographs taken, and there was actually even a complaint that got put up on the Department of Buildings website with respect to the ground floor of that building. That building actually has a certificate of occupancy that allows commercial use on the ground floor. It's a C of O that dates back to nineteen sixty-two. For a new building that was, for that building that's there that was constructed in the nineteen, I think, under a nineteen fifty-nine building permit. Anyway, the, the point is that, well, I hear you, and I hear you reading from the resolution. Those were just, that's part of the, that's just a part of, a part of the issues. I'm just trying to focus on, how do we, how do we either explain what the issues are that the board is concerned about and, and/or correct them for, so there's not some immediate problem. That was the sense I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, no, so I, so actually, um, you know, I know that that was where the fire department inspected that other site, but there's also an ECB violation for um, one sixty-two dash twenty seventh Avenue, which is lot eleven, block six eight five one. That one has a violation going back to two thousand one that says occupancy contrary to that allowed by DOB records, one family dwelling, selling, it says accessory premises for nursing home storage of clothes of dead people. That's
Right, right.
So um, that, so a lot of this is
Right.
This is what we talked about the last time, that not only there's something terrible going on in this house, but we were hearing that there was storage of really decayed material in the stor-
Just to be clear, the material is not decayed. It's just material. Clothes are clothes. I, I just think that's it. And I remember having this conversation. I, it seems like an unusual, an unfortunate choice of words in that violation. I, I know that's disturbing the way, especially today, but the, I understand, there should not be any material stored in that building. There may be some material stored in the cellar at building. They will be removed, and we will get you photographs and show you a clear basement. Otherwise, that building is a residential house with two units on the ground floor and the second floor. It's not as if that building has somehow been, you know, so to speak, taken over by Meadow Park. The only place where there were photographed, yeah.
So I, so just to clarify.
Yeah.
Focused on that complaint. Um, so you need, if, if you're gonna clean that up, then you should show us that it's cleaned up. And the other one, I believe that someone had showed us, or it's in the record, that the containers, or at least a couple of the containers with open doors weren't being used the way they're described in the resolution of two thousand nine, or whatever it was. In- instead, they, when the doors were open, it showed it was filled with junk, as opposed to medical supplies or that kind of thing. It's one thing to be using the containers in a way that's a neat storage system, and another as a way to store junk that attracts vermin. I mean, that's, it's in a residence district, and all you need is a container with, you know, rags, and then the rats come in, it's rat field day. Right? As opposed to an organized system of supplies that are being used by the nursing, so we, we need to see that. Okay, I think that was the gist of it. It was uh, kind of, let's say, disregard for the impact of all that storage of stuff.
Right.
Okay, anybody?
I think, yeah.
Fire department or anybody? Fire department would like to speak. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, man and chair, members of the board. Regarding this application, the fire alarm system has not been approved by the fire department. That's a major concern that we currently have, and I would advise the, if council could notify their, their client that their fire alarm installers should notify the fire department to arrange for a testing of the fire alarm system. I do want to go back to a comment you made earlier regarding the storage units that there are, that there are sprinklers and fire alarm. They are not. I, I had inspected those containers, and there is no evidence of a sprinkler system in there. If there was, it's an illegal connection. And true, because it's outdoors, has to be a dry system, which is a completely separate type of system that the building itself has. Just check something. Yes, we did, the fire department did inspect the sprinkler and tested sprinkler system in February twenty-sixth of this year, so we know the sprinkler is good. Uh, but I know it doesn't cover the, the storage containers in the rear yard.
So you speaking of the sprinkler, I'm sorry, go ahead. I'm sorry.
What was your question?
Yeah, so you're, you said that the, so I just want to be clear on, because there are several different buildings. When you're talking about the fire alarm, you're talking about the fire alarm for the facility or for the containers?
For the facilities, they should be, I don't remember seeing any fire alarm devices in the containers. But if they are, they should be connected to the panel, and I'm not a fire alarm inspector. So our fire alarm unit would be able to verify if they work. Currently, according to our records, the fire alarm system has not been approved by the fire department.
In, right, so the Meadow Park, for the big facility, because that's obviously, okay, that needs to be addressed.
The containers.
And then?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I, I'm gonna, to, of course, for the comments you made, I will arrange for another inspection. I'm gonna invite the board's compliance officer, Mr. Rickett, to come with me, so we're both there at the same time, and we can report back to the board members into all involved parties.
That's great. Yes, that would be much better. Okay. Okay, great. Okay, so, Mr. Most, you'll be in touch with fire department to make sure that you get that taken care of, okay?
If they, you know, assistant to arrange for inspection and a test date, please let me know. I will reach out to our fire alarm unit and explain to them this rarity, especially this being a health center for seniors, that we need to make this a priority to do the inspection ASAP.
Right, what's, how do I read you then? What's your?
Okay, you can contact me via email. My email address is john, J O H N, the letter V as in Vincent, dot daily, D A L Y, at F D N Y dot N Y C dot G O V. Your project manager has my contact information as well. I forgot who it is.
It's, it'll be me.
Probably that, probably that guy named Chess, yeah.
Batias has, she has my, all my information as well, so.
Okay, so I'll have them, they'll reach out to you, or I'll reach out to you to schedule to coordinate, I guess, a visit.
Right.
Yeah, a visit, a inspection.
Right, and, and then backing up to, we'll also continue to address and clarify the clearing of any illegal use of the cellar space of the building on Seventy-Eighth Avenue. I think that's lot eleven, and I think that the building on lot twenty-three has already been, that building is okay, is my understanding, but uh,
Right, we did inspect-
So we'll, we'll do that. We'll do those.
Okay.
Lot twenty-three, but lot eleven on Seventy-Eighth Avenue, we were unable to gain access. We had, I had seen someone there, and we were knocking on the door. Uh, Mr. Ricketts was, was with me that day, but no one opened the door for us.
Right, okay, so we'll make sure you get that access as well.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
And then, you know, in terms of what's stored in the storage containers, just to uh, improve-
Clean them up, make sure they're organized.
And not-
Closed.
Yeah.
Who's been locked?
Closed and locked and not rodent-infested, et cetera, so maybe send us photographs, provide us with photographs.
Yeah, was that, I mean, was that an observed, was that an observed thing? Because I don't recall hearing that before, that there was a
That's my recollection, but it's true that I, you know, how memory works. My recollection is that someone said, or someone showed us a photograph of something pretty scary in there. Not scary as in, you know, decaying persons or anything.
Yeah, no, okay, yes, yes.
Or like, um, it's just the kind of thing that in other, like a neglected storage container, which is then therefore attracts rodents and, yeah, which is an undesirable thing to have that you live next door to.
I do want to comment to the, the council's clients. Uh, they do have a container there that has, holds hazardous waste, and we had contacted the DEP. They have conducted inspection, and they have never had any problem with the storage of hazardous material in the, in the container. That's a good thing, so.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
All right, so I do understand, though, that you had asked for, which is probably how it would end up working anyway, that you would ask for initially an adjournment to early twenty twenty-one. Is that still what you're looking at?
In terms of, well, so just to briefly touch on it, I mean, the the certificate, you mean things relating to the certificate of need and the, those sort of more substantive issues?
Yeah, so you had asked to adjourn this year. There was all this work that needed to be done, and you want it to be continued till the end of the year, et cetera, et cetera. Is that still the case, and?
Well, yes, I mean, that's regarding the substance of the application, yeah, we'd like, you know, we're hoping to somehow, you know, come out from under the weight of COVID and, and then being able to devote more energy, I think, to to this, because this is really, I mean, there couldn't be a, a, a better example of a place that needs this relief. Unfortunately, COVID also makes it difficult to pursue the relief at the same time. But I know that doesn't have anything to do with, you know, these more immediate issues that we just discussed.
Right, so this is an extension of time to complete construction, and basically no construction was ever started, right?
Correct.
Your client's uh, opinion, position, whatever, that it's going to be able to start construction anytime in the nearest future?
Well, they need to resume. They've got this certificate of need application that's, I think, now, they got this, the, that last thing that I had submitted was that, there was a letter that was included in my submission um, that was dated uh, February twenty-seventh, and included in that submission was an important letter that had been obtained by the client from DOH dated February twenty-fourth, and it basically told the applicant that they would be able to recoup construction costs as part of their reimbursement program in connection with, anyway, that, that concept, that they would be able to recoup construction costs through, I think, the Medicaid reimbursement. That was a key letter that meant they were sort of greenlit then to pursue the certificate of need, but one of the ironies then, or cruel ironies of COVID is that I think a lot of nursing homes have a slightly depressed occupancy rate, because people aren't, you know, so anxious to get into a nursing home. So uh, with a, with a depressed occupancy rate, not dramatically, but significantly enough, it makes it hard to make the case to the Department of Health that we need to move forward with this project, because they see this lower occupancy rate, whereas they normally would want to see maybe ninety-eight, ninety-seven percent occupancy, and if the occupancy rate of the facility is lower in the eighties or even in the upper seventies, it doesn't make a great case. So it needs to be this sort of return to normal, some normalcy for this facility and probably other facilities in order to move forward with the certificate of need and, and then ultimately construction.
But if, if you're storing everything you need to be storing in the building in containers outside, which cannot be a permanent solution, and in buildings that are residential buildings, which can also not be a permanent solution, doesn't that make an argument that the building is undersized to meet even, even eighty percent occupancy?
Yes. I mean, I don't know if, if it's possible to consolidate some of the containers today. I, you know, and get rid of one or two because there's somehow less occupancy, but I don't think it, I don't think the facility, it doesn't work that way. They probably are using all of those to their, to their maximum. Having a few less people doesn't eliminate that need. Am I missing the point there?
No, what I'm saying is, you, you can't have a proposal that keeps nine containers in the side yard and uses two residential buildings for backfill. It needs to go inside the building, and if the building is unable to contain the functions, that's the whole programmatic needs analysis, right? The building is undersized, right? So unless you reduce the number of bedrooms, which is kind of, who knows what's going on now with nursing home design in terms of that stuff, but unless you significantly reduce the number of bedrooms um, to make room for that stuff, you, you have a building that's undersized to meet current demand.
Right, the building as it, yes, I mean, ideally, in two thousand and eleven, it would have been, look, we're clearly- would have been, look, we're clearly undersized, let's get moving with the project. So is, if the point is, if somehow they can't move forward with this thing, and it doesn't work, they have a different problem, is that they're already, they've already outgrown their building.
Right.
And they've got a, they're gonna have to figure out off-site storage solutions, or, like you said, or reduce beds, which I assume is, is clearly not part of anyone's business plan, that's sort of moving the wrong direction, but figuring out how to.
It may be the health department plan, given the disasters in nursing homes, right?
Right. So. Well, yes, I mean, clearly, the facility is not conducive to functioning during and append this kind of, this kind of pandemic, which, which needs social distancing, I mean, that's, the whole point of this would be to facilitate and enable social distancing, this application would, would double the size of the facility without increasing the number of beds, which is exactly what they need. Unfortunately, it takes time, and.
Okay.
We're not there right now.
Okay, so, end of year or early Jan, say in January is a better, is a return time to at least get an update, how about that?
That's fine.
Okay, all right, so that's what we're gonna do, so I'd like to see if there's anyone from the public who would like to speak on this application. Tony?
Twenty-four oh nine BZ seventy-eight dash ten one hundred and sixty-fourth Road, Queens. This is the Meadow, Meadow Park Rehabilitation and Healthcare Center.
Right, so if anyone from the public would like to speak on this application, please call in. Okay. Just give it a few more seconds, so we allow people to call in. All right. Okay, then, thank you very much for attending, and thank you, everybody, for handling this long hearing that worth almost not a break.
Okay, so, am I concluding?
Thank you.
Yes.
So this concludes the public hearing for June twenty-ninth, twenty twenty, two P M. session, we'll resume at ten o'clock tomorrow, June thirtieth.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Night.